Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to joining us, welcome everybody for joining us at tonight's Caldwell County Planning Board. We're glad to have you join us for tonight's meeting. The Caldwell County Planning Board is an advisory board to the Caldwell County Commissioners, comprised of citizen members who voluntarily devote their time and talents to a variety of zoning and land development issues in the community. All Planning Board recommendations are subject to final action by the Board of Commissioners. Our general rules of order are that we're pleased to hear all non-repetitive comments. However, large groups are asked to name a spokesperson, and if you wish to appear before the Board, please fill out an appearance request lobbyist registration form, they're located at the back table, and give them to the recording secretary, Kim, to my right. When the chairperson recognizes you, state your name and address, and Robert's rules of order will govern the conduct of the meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
And if we could please add an additional comment period after Kent has sworn in but before the first presentation, please?
Okay, so if it's okay, we will add a comment period between swearing in of the new member and the Broadway group. So with that amendment, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move we approve the agenda.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. You have in your packet the minutes of the March 9, 2021, meeting. Take just a second to review those, and when you review those, I'll have a motion to approve the minutes.
Dr. Church, I make a motion to approve the minutes as is.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. First on our agenda item is the swearing in of a new member. I'd like to welcome Mr. Kent Greer, and thank you for your service or willingness to serve on this committee. But we will turn it over to Mr. Thomas Welch, clerk to the Board of Commissioners.
Kent, if you'd just like to stand where you are, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right and repeat after me. Aye, Kent Greer.
Aye, Kent Greer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not consistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As Caldwell County Planning Board member, so help me God.
As Caldwell County Planning Board member, so help me God.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Next on our agenda is public comment request, and I know one person is here to, if you'll pass that to Kim. Charles, is there anybody else that wishes to speak before the Board? Okay, Charles, we'll recognize you.
We're now going to hear Broadway Group first.
Well, we're going to do a public comment request, and then we're going to, then we're going to talk about the rezoning request, and then we'll go into that.
Well, I guess I'm concerned because, Lee, I read the statute, statute 160D says in section 406, paragraph D, that as a participant in a party that has the ability to object to the decision that we're partying to the discussion.
Okay.
It's not public comment.
Not public. Carol, can you advise on that?
I'm sorry, would you repeat what you just said?
If you could, sir, come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
Under section 160D, part 406, paragraph D, the applicant, the local government, or any person who shall have the standing to appeal the decision shall have the right to participate as a party in an evidentiary hearing, which is what this is. Not public comment.
No, it's not an evidentiary hearing. This is not a quasi judicial hearing.
Boards shall follow quasi-traditional procedures in determining appeals of administrative decisions, including applications.
That is true, but this is not one of those. There are quasi judicial hearings.
This is not an evidentiary hearing? You're not even going to present anything?
No, no, we're not taking evidence under oath. We're, as far as I know, we're not. Is that right?
Not to my knowledge.
Right, this is, we're taking no evidence under oath tonight.
We are looking at the zoning application, and we're seeing if it meets zoning requirements. And that's all our role is, and if it meets zoning requirements, then...
That would be evidentiary if it meets requirements.
No, it's not evidentiary.
Okay. Well, I'll speak now. I may appeal later, but I'll speak now.
Okay, and that's fine. That's fine.
I have a PowerPoint presentation to present. The first thing I would point out, this is Kings Creek as it currently is today and as it currently exists. The proposed Broadway Group has put in a plot, and their particular plot is this particular design that was given. Three things I want to point out about this. Number one, with this plat, there is a reference mark here that we will come back to later of an elevation of 1,276 feet. Down here at the bottom of the roadway, there's another elevation of 1,264 feet. We'll come back to that later, but I want to point that out. Couple other things on this plat, just for note. Number one, this is not Love Lady Township, which is what's listed on here. Number two, it's not Rutherford County either. So that's what's on this particular plat that was submitted. The other thing I would point out is these particular close contour lines that are in the bottom of the page here, they denote a steep incline, and how close that incline, the closer the contour lines are, the steeper it is. So just want to point that out. This is the original photo that we saw earlier. Here is the area that they wish to place a Dollar General out. I would note that there's been comment made that later on, if they were approved, they would get approval to widen this intersection. In speaking with North Carolina DOT, there will be no widening on the side of the school due to infrastructure. So if there is any widening, it's going to be significant on the other side of the road. It will definitely impact 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 homes and a business significantly. The other thing, a little bit closer on this particular intersection I would point out, is, we'll go through the colors here. The yellow is the lot that they wish to establish on. The red right here, the double lines, is the driveway application that has been mentioned. However, there has been no formal application made to North Carolina DOT, and there's been no approval, preapproval of any kind of driveway access on that area. The other thing I would point out is there's two red lines with arrows here which denote turning lanes that currently exist. These are not turning lanes that would have to be installed. They currently turn onto the Grandin Road and then also into the school. The third thing I would point out, there's an orange line here. This orange line denotes 250 feet from the Grandin entrance and 250 feet on the other side as well, and we'll come back to that as far as why that's important. The original application notes that they have 260 feet of road footage, which doesn't denote where that particular access point would be. So that is problematic because that could mean a lot of different things, and we'll get into what that can mean depending on where that road, if it's ever granted, where it would be and what it would mean. Couple things I'd point out about this particular intersection and things that are important to note. First of all, braking distances that are involved in this intersection. Currently, the speed limit through this area is 45 miles an hour. Forensic Dynamics is a source that used for reconstruction of accidents, and their calculation is on dry asphalt, this would mean at 45 miles an hour, basically 100 feet to slow down and stop. That's not counting reactionary time depending on the driver. Depending on the age of the driver, that could be even further.
Correction, 35 mile an hour.
The other thing I would point out is that in wet asphalt...
Please don't interrupt him, please.
The other thing I would point out is on wet asphalt, this grows even further to 123 feet. Couple things I would also point out, if someone's speeding in this area, it could be up to 170 feet at 60 miles an hour, and it could be 218. Now, you might say, well, why is that important? Well, this road is normally 55 miles an hour, except for in this small little section. And also, I would point out that the North Carolina DOT, or not North, the North Carolina Highway Patrol has ticketed folks through there close to 70 miles an hour. So it's not unusual to see someone coming through fairly quick. The other thing that was concerning is of the driveway entrance. This is the manual for North Carolina, and even though it says 2003, that is the current policy for North Carolina's driveway and street access. Currently, it states in this area that it's subject to, it's subject to many things that will determine what a driveway access will be. And in this case, as we mentioned earlier, there's been no submission of a formal application to review and no prior approval by North Carolina DOT to this facility. These are a couple of examples of some of the things that the state requires. One of the most important things that they require is they're looking at intersections and they're looking at site distance. The site distance is something that is of concern because this happens to be a peak, and I want you to watch the video. This is driving up toward that particular intersection going up an incline, and I want you to notice at what point you can see over it, because at the top of it is where they want to build this store. You still can't see over it, and right there's where the store would be. And I still have not seen the crest until now. That was traveling from Wilkesboro toward Lenore. This is going the other way. This is going from Lenore to Wilkesboro. And I want you to notice the nice small vehicle in front of us. This is a vehicle that has the potential to have 80,000 pounds onboard, and I doubt he's going to stop at 170 feet if he has to. Now, you might say, why is this important? Well, if you notice the car behind him, no one pulling out from that intersection's ever going to see this car right here over this truck. And right here's the entrance that they have for that property, right there. Now, this is the particular entrance that we're talking about right here, and I want you to pay attention in this video to when you see the car. There's the truck leaving. See the car yet? See the car? I don't see it yet. Wow, there it is, right there. This is a valley down here that no one will ever see anything coming until it's right up on them. That was what I would refer to as the submarine effect because the person that starts at the top of the hill, goes down into a valley, and you don't see them until they come back up. Now, we've talked about site distance. This is the North Carolina manual that I just pulled up. This is the minimum requirement for site distance. And you'll note that this is a two-lane road, so the passenger vehicles are what apply. For a passenger vehicle at 45 miles an hour, there has to be 450 feet of site distance to recognize that vehicle. Now, remember, we showed you earlier the 250 feet on the drawing that we had, there was barely 250, and we're nowhere close to 450 required there. And for a tractor trailer, you'll notice it's 765 feet based on their calculation that would be required for that logging truck that we just saw in site distance. Now, vehicles approach from both east and west on this particular road, I want you to pay attention, and keep in mind that this video was shot at 7:00 in the evening. You'll notice 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Five vehicles just converged on that intersection. Now, you might say, well, that's not too bad. Well, just remember this, right there where I have the cursor is where all the traffic, Kings Creek School's coming out at 3:00, and you can imagine what that looks like. The other thing of the intersection shows the decline, and we talked about this earlier, for approaching vehicles. The other side of the road has an even greater decline as it drops off. We saw it coming up, which is coming from the Wilkesboro side. In this case, we saw in the survey that was done, just in the short distance, they listed, they listed 13 feet in elevation just in the 250 feet that we pointed out. And for an average vehicle that only extends a driver by about 4.5 feet, there's no way someone's going to see over 13 feet in elevation of that hill. The entrance to this particular site, you can see right here, the vehicles that are currently here, you can see how they disappear once they get down into this valley, you don't see them. Now, this is the particular site they wish to build on, and I'd point out that you'll notice there's the school, and right there's the stake. It abuts right up against the school, and that's the entrance we were talking about where all that school traffic's going to come out of, including buses. This photo shows approximately four intersecting points that are here. You've got the two with the particular highway, and then you've got Grandin Road and the school basically across from each other. And when 18 was redone, I would say at least 25 years ago, that's when they curved the road out so those two would meet in a four-way intersection. This is the other side we talked about earlier. Now, this is one thing that I thought was kind of interesting. Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Dollar General wants to sell beer and wine in their stores. They sell it in all their stores. And in this case, North Carolina states in part five of that application process that there cannot be a public school right there within 50 feet, and in this case, this is an abutment right up against the school. So I would point out that that's another obstacle in this particular scenario. Lastly, this is a map of our area, and it's from Morganton on the lower end of the page, traveling Highway 18 all the way to Boomer. Everywhere I've got a star here, and I actually left one out. Here's Chesterfield, which is in Burke County. Right here's the first one in Baiton, or in Gamewell. Then I left one out, which should be right here, which is the one in Gamewell, Lenore, right there at the Southwest Loop, the new big one they built right across from the entrance to the old Brohlil complex. And you've got the one here in Lenore, right near Smith's Crossroads, which is behind AJ's Then you've got the one here at the new fire department out on Highway 90, the proposed one in Kings Creek, and they've already got one in Boomer. So this would be seven stores on a 35-mile stretch of road. The other thing I'd point out, how much they've been expanding this, these three right here going toward the Lake Road, that's just the ones on the Colling Springs Route. They've got three there, plus the one in Hudson and a new one in Oak Hill. The goal is of this company who has 14,000 stores in 44 states, they want to put one every five miles. Now, basically, you might say, well, okay, that's fine. But when you do that, there's also economic impacts that will be felt as well that I think need to be addressed. If Dollar General's allowed to use monopolistic sourcing, which they will use in this area, the loss of one of the only two sources of gasoline and diesel fuel on Highway 18 will be lost. There's only the store right, that we're talking about right now, which used to be Wheelings, which is now Stop &amp; Save in Kings Creek, and the other one is Lackey's, which is in Boomer. Between Lenore and Wilkesboro, if this happens, one will be eliminated, possibly both now that the one in Boomer is struggling, the only other source currently being Lackey's. This would mean a five-mile drive east for Kings Creek residents and a 10-mile drive west from, and I would point out, Agriculture Kings Creek for diesel fuel and gasoline if this were to happen. So I would point out that Dollar General and the proposal that they put forth poses not only safety risks that I think we've easily demonstrated, but they also pose economic risks to the Kings Creek community, and we, the citizens, don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Are there any other requests? Kim? Okay, I'll turn it over to our planning director, Shelley Stevens.
Thank you for being here today, and thank you, Kent, for joining the Board, and thank you to everyone who's present in the audience as well today. So I'll first address some of the items from the previous presentation, and I'll also let the applicant address some of those. The survey that was submitted to us with the application is just for delineation of the rezoning request. That was not an official subdividing request, which would be submitted separately, and I assume after this. And then we review that plat against the subdivision ordinance at that time, and then it goes to the Register of Deeds. They have not submitted this to the Register of Deeds, and we have not signed off on the plat. Again, the lines on the plat are delineating where they would like to see this rezoning occur. So there could be errors on the plat in that regard, like Rutherford County, for example, and we will review that at the time of plat review, when they submit that for review. So again, that was basically, to summarize that, that's part of their application in order that they can rezone a portion of the parcel. That's their hopes, and they have to delineate what they would like to have rezoned. So that is the purpose that that plat, that survey rather, serves in this application. As for widening the road, I'm not aware, I speak frequently with DOT, of potential widening, not to say that they may not widen in the future, they have not mentioned that. And DOT does look at line of sight and all of those matters with regard to driveway permits. And they have noted that they are going to require a left turn lane at this driveway for this particular use. They did say that they have not yet officially administered this or provided them this driveway permit, but something that we're going to go over in the presentation, and it's very important to remember here because it would matter if this went to Superior Court, if Dollar General appealed this to Superior Court, for example, which they have in the past. They did that with their last request. They did that to the Board of Commissioners' decision with the last request. If this goes to Superior Court, we must keep in mind that during these hearings, we have to take into account every possible use that could potentially go on the potentially rezoned parcel. So, for example, they're requesting general business rezoning here. So we have to think about every potential use, and I have that list with me, it's in the zoning ordinance, that would be allowed at this site when we're thinking about and considering the rezoning. So by state law, we have to look at the consistency of the request with the comp plan, and we're going to get into that in detail. And we have to look at the health, safety, and welfare, as he was touching on, for the community and the surrounding area. But the part that the state also requires that was left out of that presentation is that we have to look at that for every potential use that could possibly go there if it were zoned general business. And I'm sure some of his arguments he would still make in that case, but I just wanted to make that clear. That's important. And I'm not familiar with his source, the Forensic Dynamics, Inc. source that he provided with regard to some of the driving-related information. I'm not saying that that is correct or incorrect. However, DOT does look at safety and all of those factors that he was going over in their review for driveway permits and for road widens as well. And I do know DOT does have a manual that, at least a 2010 manual, and I am pretty confident that that contains the driveway information as well. I don't know if it's changed and maybe the same as the 2003 manual, could be a separate manual, because I'm not a DOT expert, you know, I'm not DOT. But I do know that they have a 2010 manual for their subdivision standards. And then, just to briefly touch on the alcohol sales, those are actually not allowed in the unincorporated area of Caldwell County. If you do see alcohol sales in the unincorporated area at stores in Caldwell County, it's actually not the unincorporated area. For example, towards Lake Road His, there's a Jack Be Quick and Ingalls that can sell alcohol, and that is because Rutherford College has annexed those. And, not to get into the weeds too much with this, but it's a referendum, and the county has voted not to allow that, and that is why that's not allowed in the unincorporated area at stores such as Dollar General, unless they were to be annexed by a city at this time. Now, this could, you know, in the future, the city, the county residents could vote to allow that when that comes up. And I will let Dollar General also address anything else they would like to address. Those were just some things I noticed with the presentation. So as you're aware, the Broadway Group LLC is requesting this application, and they are requesting a rezoning of 2.227 acres per that survey of a 28.62 acre parcel. So the parcel itself is 28.62 acres, but they have officially submitted the delineation of the area they would like to be rezoned, and that is 2.227 acres of that parcel that we'll look at on an upcoming slide and which he did show in the survey and his presentation as well, Mr. Woody. And the surrounding zoning in the area is neighborhood business as well as residential agricultural. And the location of this parcel, which he did show us in his presentation as well, Mr. Woody did, is adjacent and south of Wilkesboro Boulevard, also known as North Carolina 18, and it is north and also west of Laxton Road, and we're going to look at a map here in a second. The road actually curves around the parcel, Laxton Road does. And then, this is a map that I received from DOT upon the Board of Commission request for additional information beyond that which they usually provide for rezoning requests. And what this map shows is crashes in a five-year period. And before we go over this any further, I just want to reiterate that when a rezoning hearing occurs, it is not regarding a particular use itself, in this case, Dollar General that we've been discussing. It is regarding the property and all potential future uses allowed with the proposed district. And the assessment of reasonableness and potential impact of a proposed rezoning is for that district rather than a particular use within the district per state law. And that is important to remember again in case something goes to Superior Court. So keeping that in mind when we're looking at this data, because this data is specific to this site, and just keep that in mind and in context. So DOT has stated that they will not require a traffic impact analysis for this site at this time, which is needed for projects that are projected to generate more than 3,000 vehicles per day. And that would be the average annual daily traffic measurement that they do. And they consider 3,000 additional vehicles per day to be enough to impact adjoining roads. And again, they do not project or predict that Dollar General would generate that. And the current average annual daily traffic on NC 18 along this road, Wilkesboro Boulevard here, in this area, according to DOT, is about 5,000 vehicles per day. And per NC DOT's Traffic Engineering Accident Analysis System report, there were 17 accidents in a five-year period, and you can see the dots on this map showing where the accidents And that five-year period was from February 1 of 2016 to January 31 of 2016. And that five-year period was from February 1st of 2016 to January 31st of 2021, in the .98 miles in front of 3660 Wilkesboro Boulevard, and just one more time, we'll look at that, it's that area right there. So, pretty much a mile, .98 miles in front of 3660 Wilkesboro Boulevard, from milepost 16.81, which is closer to Lenore, the western side, to milepost 17.79, which is moving away from Lenore on the map there. You can see the mileposts. And then, I do have some tables with crash data DOT provided. So, looking at the crash summary data, there were 17 crashes, as noted, within that five-year period from February 1st, 2016, to January 31st, 2021. There were four non-fatal injury crashes, and so total injury crashes, there were also four because there were no fatal ones. In the five-year period, according to DOT, there were no fatal crashes from February 1st, 2016, to January 31st, 2021, from milepost 16.81 to 17.79. This is the data that DOT provided.
Jeff will note that a high school died right in front of Williams, pulled out in front of a dump truck. Congratulations.
What year was that? Would it have been before? I remember it happened, it might have been before.
We can ask DOT what year that was, and they can get that information.
We have that, and we also have a, we have a 20-year-old that's paralyzed.
Let's wait, Charles, and I'll give you a chance to speak again.
Yeah, I wish to rebut, since she's getting to rebut me.
Yes, you may do that, and we will gather that data the exact year, and we'll see if it was between February 1st of 2016 to January 31st, 2021, which is what I stated in this, which is the data from DOT, which they gather also from the Highway Patrol. He stated that it was in that five-year period, so we're going to look into that.
It said it was in that five-year period, I said, it had an accident with the town.
You said that this was incorrect. This is the five-year period.
Let's move on, Shelley. Shelley, let's move on, and then we'll give you a chance to speak, Charles.
Yes. In this five-year period, there were zero fatal crashes, as I previously stated, with total crashes being 17. The total injury crashes, as previously stated, all being non-fatal injury crashes, as noted on this table, were four, with four total injury crashes, because there were zero fatal injury crashes from February 1st of 2016 to January 31st of 2021, according to DOT's data. The property damage-only crashes, there were 13. Seven of the crashes occurred at night, and one crash involved drugs and alcohol, according to DOT's data. Looking at the crash severity summary, which DOT has stated is regarding vehicle damage, and we're going to look at injury severity as well, but they stated that this is with regard to the damage to the vehicles themselves, even though there is a fatal crash category, it is still looking at the damage to the vehicles. So, looking at that, again, 17 total crashes, zero fatal, Class A, which is a step below fatal crashes in terms of vehicle damage severity, there were zero of those in that five-year period. And then, when you look at Class B crashes, there were, there was one crash in that category per DOT within that five-year period. There were three Class C crashes, according to the DOT data, and then there were 13 property damage-only crashes in that five-year period. And then, looking at the accident-type summary, which again was provided by DOT when we requested additional data beyond what they normally provide, this is what they provided us. Looking at the accident-type summary, there was one crash that was due to angling, and I asked what the definition of that was, and they said that that meant a T-bone occurred. There were eight crashes that involved or were caused by animals. There were three fixed object crashes, one overturn or rollover crash, two rear-end slow or stop crashes, one right turn, same roadway crash, one sideswipe, opposite direction crash. And then, as previously mentioned, we're looking at injury summary here as well. So, this just goes over the injuries, and then we'll look at severity of injuries next. So, there were zero fatal injuries in the five-year period that DOT provided us. There were zero Class A injuries, which is a step down from fatal. There was, there were three Class B injuries, three Class C injuries, which is below Class B in terms of severity, and there were six non-fatal injuries and a total of six injuries. So, if you recall, a previous slide showed that there were four non-fatal injury crashes, so the six total injuries indicate that multiple people were injured in at least one crash during this time period. And then, looking at our comprehensive plans, future land use map, which many of you are familiar with, but for those who are not, our comprehensive plan is created based on public input and updated approximately every 10 to 20 years, and the Western Piedmont Council of Governments, a team of about 20 people, did work on a recent update to our comprehensive plan that was approved in 2020, and the public was sought, public input was sought at multiple meetings and public input forums with regard to the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. And this is the future land use map that was developed based on that. These are required to be reviewed with rezoning cases by state law. So, again, we must look at the consistency of the request with the comprehensive plan per state law. And the site is located in an area identified in the comprehensive plan's future land use map with a village neighborhood node. So, if you look at NC-18, which is kind of in the eastern and middle part of the map there, you will see on NC-18, the brown circle there, and that is the village neighborhood node that I'm referencing. And this node does suggest rezonings to general business, neighborhood business, office institutional, low and medium-density residential, and multifamily zoning districts are appropriate for this area, and that is defined within the comprehensive plan. And the middle of the parcel in question is in a special flood hazard area, but the area the survey was submitted for does not contain any special flood hazard area, and none of the site is in the watershed-protected or critical area of the county, and those are allowed to be developed. Sites that do contain those areas, watershed and special flood hazard areas, are still allowed to apply for rezonings and be rezoned, but that is just noteworthy during the rezoning And then, looking at an aerial of the site, you can kind of see what the layout of the other surrounding parcels are, and this is the whole 28.62 acres. And again, we're going to look at that area that they're requesting the rezoning of. And here's a closer view of the particular parcel. And this here is the 2.227 acres that they are proposing for rezoning. And I requested they provide that also in the context of the larger parcel, that's not required by application, but just so everyone can see what it would look like. So, if they submit that plat for review, that would be what they would be dividing. But regardless of whether they submit the plat as an actual subdivision of property, which they can choose to do or not do, that is the area they would like to have rezoned, which does need to be delineated. And I did review the rezoning applications' consistency with the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, the watershed ordinance, the flood damage prevention ordinance, as well as reasonableness, public health, safety, and general welfare. And the planning board has reviewed or will review the application materials against their copies of the comp plan, the zoning ordinance, the flood damage prevention ordinance, and watershed ordinance, and will decide if they would like to recommend the rezoning based on consistency with these documents and on the effect the rezoning might have on public health, safety, and welfare. And as previously noted, by state law, we have to look at the consistency of a rezoning request with our comprehensive plan, including its future land use map. We also have to look at it in terms of public health, safety, and welfare, and again, this is the entire rezoning request, not a particular use that may go within a newly zoned district by law, because again, if that went to court, the court would point out that that was done erroneously if we were to look at just a particular use. And so, I have a proposed consistency statement here that you may choose to use, to recommend to the Board of Commissioners, or you may create your own consistency statement, either against the request or for the request. And the staff recommendation is recommendation of approval of consistency statement per GS 153A-341, followed by recommendation of approval of map amendment. And the consistency statement reads, "Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, which contains a future land use map that aligns with the request by suggesting general business zoning for this area via the village neighborhood node. And there's no evidence that the rezoning would negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties, and it can promote public health, safety, and welfare by allowing a retailer to provide goods to the public." And the motion that would go with that is to recommend approval of the rezoning to the Board of Commissioners. And just another note, the GS 153A-341 reference there. So, we're next going to look at text amendments to our various ordinances with regard to 160D, which is something the legislature has updated, and they've consolidated the planning and development statutes. But this statute reference should still be here until we adopt those changes, and I did check with the School of Government on that previously. Until we adopt the changes to our local ordinances, we reference the previous general statute before they consolidated the planning and development sections. So, that's why that reference is there. And that's all I have, if anyone has any questions or comments or anything.
Okay. Thank you. From the Broadway Group.
I'm Christina Moore with the Broadway Group. I know that we've already previously met on this matter back in February, when y'all had voted to approve this rezon to general business. Since February, none of that criteria or the circumstances have changed. As Shelley has presented, this rezon is supported by the future land use plan, and we do not negatively impact the health, safety, and wellness of the community. To address the ABC comment, not all of our Dollar General stores sell alcohol. It is literally site-specific. I have a site in Swain County that does not sell because they do not allow alcohol. So, if it is not supported by ABC in that municipality, then we do not sell. We have submitted our plans to DOT, we've gone through two rounds of revisions with them, we have not gotten to the approval point, but we are continuously working to revise our plans to meet with their requesting of us. As we are with any municipality, DEQ, the county we'll be submitting our plans to, we have to permit to all of these authorities, and the experts in those fields will make sure that what we are developing and building is safe for the community. I would like to take some time to highlight some of what Shelley spoke to on NC DOT's Accident Analysis Report. In the past five years, there's been 17 accidents in a one-mile radius of our location, none of which were fatal. Of these 17 accidents, 76% of them were property damage only with no injuries. And of these 17 accidents, nearly half of them were caused by animals, which is probably pretty common on any rural highway in North Carolina. Of these 17 accidents, only one of them occurred directly across the street at the convenience store, which is, if you've ever been to that shop and save, it's understandable because there is no delineated driveway to enter the store. It is a swath of asphalt that is flush with the highway. You have trucks that like to park parallel, so it is really difficult to come in and out of that store. So, I understand that that particular accident was a right-turn-out accident, and they were hit. That's understandable. However, we're proposing to do roadway improvements to include a center left-turn lane, not only to the benefit of our store, but to the convenience store across the street. I know that we've heard some opposition tonight, and we heard it at the last meeting and the first meeting that we had with you all, but there is a good chunk of this community that wants and needs this store here, and that is reflected in the hundreds of signatures that Mr. and Mrs. Kincaid have collected from people in the community. That was represented at the Board of Commissioners' meeting, of people that came up and spoke about how it is so difficult for them to find transportation to get their groceries because they're elderly or whatever the case may be. There is a good chunk of this community that wants and needs this store, and it would be a huge benefit to them. That is who we're building the store for. And we are ensuring that by building the store, that we are building it per NC DOT standards and recommendations, and that we're providing safe access to and from our store for our customers and the people traveling along that highway. So, I appreciate your time and your consideration again on this matter. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any of me.
Thank you. Any questions? Charles, I'll open the back up if you'd like to say anything.
Well, I just point out, you know, they wish to make the claim that there's no economic impact, you didn't provide any impact, economic impact study of any kind, to blatantly say that we're going to provide a store that will give people what they want. It's all my dollars what's driving what they want, in this case, for Dollar General. It's all about sales. It has nothing to do with community. And I think we kid ourselves if we think that's what it's about. The point I would make is that, you know, I see the statement that the director has put out, don't support any such statement that says there's no negative impact, because for some people, they may lose their business. For others, they may lose their access that they currently have to fuels and so forth that won't be there. And while Dollar General wants to say, "We don't sell beer in places where it's a dry county for the moment," they don't sell gasoline at all their facilities. And so, you know, when you take that away, that's going to be a pretty good chunk for, especially the folks that live on the Grandin Road, especially further down toward 268, that's going to be a pretty good little haul to go find fuel. So, I think that to say that there's no economic impact, that's kind of bogus to say there's not going to be, because there will be. So, I think most importantly, while we've seen all this issue with fatalities, we did look it up, and there is a fatality in 2009, is the death of a student.
2009.
He pulled out in front of a dump truck coming westbound from Wilkesboro, headed toward Lenore, and he was killed instantly. We also have another young man that was around that same period, that was pulling into the Grandin Road, what's the student's name?
Please don't, don't listen.
Anyhow, anyhow, it was a young man, he was a student, and he submarined under the dash, and he's paralyzed. He still lives in Kings Creek. So, you know, to add more traffic, to add more obstacles to this intersection is not going to do anyone any favors of any kind. And most importantly, you know, there's other points we pointed out in the earlier presentation, not only is this an issue with the proximity of things, it's also the water hookup for the, it's the end of the line for Caldwell County. And that hydrant that sits right there at Kings Creek School is the hydrant hookup for Kings Creek Fire Department and Yakon Valley. So, their tanker trucks are there quite regularly, and if you impede that, you impede their ability to do their job as well with more traffic and more obstacles for them to deal with. So, I think all in all, I think while you want to say, you know, we're only doing it for just one particular business, I don't think any business should be right there in that location. So, I'll make that blanket there. There doesn't need to be one there, that proximity to that school, and that proximity to the infrastructure that's actually there. And if someone were to, let's say, overrun that new lane you're talking about, that would put them right into that hydrant that's right there on the edge of the school. So, there's some serious concerns that I think need to be addressed, but most importantly, I don't think we need to gloss over the fact that there are economic impacts to residents that currently are there. And to bring in a new party to destroy their way of life, I don't think it's a good thing for any county citizen. And as far as people that want it for grocery purposes, these are the same petitions of people who don't want it. And there are hundreds of names here with names and addresses, and they're residents of Kings Creek. And there's only 1,700 people live there, so anyhow, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Just to, I know you mentioned, I forgot your name.
Christina.
Christina, you mentioned a petition that, for, for the store there, and Charles, you mentioned a petition against, and we have both of those petitions, and it looks like it's kind of split. I haven't counted them. And so, you'll present it to her, but we have seen those petitions. Any questions or comments from our board members? Any more information that you need? On our role, and I appreciate your, appreciate your comments, Charles, and I appreciate what you're saying, but as a board, we have to, we have to weigh, does, we can't put our personal feelings in. We have to weigh, does this meet, does it meet our zoning criteria, and does it identify with the comprehensive plan? And does it, does it, does it meet those areas, and is it, would be beneficial to the county based on the comprehensive? based on the comprehensive plan and the county's direction of the comprehensive plan? I know we spent a year developing the comprehensive plan and had multiple meetings and a lot of time with that. We have a presentation from our planning director, Shelley Stevens. Any comments or any requests from our board? Recommendations from our board?
Well, I'll just comment. It appears to me that basically, nothing has changed from our February meeting, other than the, there's a more precise location of what they want to rezone, whereas before, it was just the whole track had issued, not just the particular piece. I don't, it, I thought met all the requirements before, and I still believe it does. So if you're looking for a motion, then I would move that we approve the application.
Okay. Based on the consistency statement provided by Shelley or Dr. Ong?
Yes.
Based on that?
Yes.
So we have a motion to approve based on the consistency statement. And I'll read, I'll read the consistency state, consistency statement. Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the amendment is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, which contains a future land use map that aligns with the request by suggesting general business zoning for this area via the village neighborhood node. There's no evidence that the rezoning would negatively impact the surrounding neighborhood and adjacent properties, and it can promote public health, safety, and welfare by allowing a retailer to provide goods to the public. So we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Second by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for your time, guys. Thank you for being here. Next on the agenda is text amendments, and we'll turn it over to Shelley.
Thank you, and thank you to everybody who came out tonight to hear that first request and also for the text amendments. Thank you to the planning board for hearing this request for text amendments.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way to turn the refrigerator off in here?
Eric, can you turn the air down?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, it was kind of getting chilly, actually. So thanks for that as well. So, next on our agenda are text amendment requests. So the North Carolina general statutes have been updated and consolidated. In particular, Chapter 160D is the consolidation and updated based on, you know, new information, best practices, grammatical changes, things of that nature of the city and the county planning statutes. They were very similar, but they're in two different parts of the general statutes formerly, and so they've combined those. And by law, we have to make amendments to our various ordinances to make them align with the general statute updates. And all of the proposed text amendments are in your zoning ordinance. And at the pre-agenda meeting, we talked about whether to go over each one, one by one, or maybe just ask if you had questions based on the extensive checklist provided to you via email last week, and then also in your packets. So the School of Government provided a checklist that's in your packets that I'm sure you're aware of, that shows what needs to change in the various ordinances. And it also shows just items that we should all be aware of that have changed at the state level, but haven't, don't necessarily need to change at the local level, or don't have to be included in ordinances. And I see people looking, so I'll give you a second to get to that page, to either the checklist or the ordinances. I recommend the checklist if you're wanting to look at something. Yeah, it's kind of lengthy, even the checklist is, yeah. And the ordinances are very lengthy, but they are called out and read using track changes. And track changes is a handy feature, so you can, if you're looking at them on your computer, you can go through each change using track changes, just hit next. And some of y'all probably use that, and that way, you're not sitting there looking through all 200 pages for the proposed changes.
Well, I'm still looking.
Okay, no problem.
Are we in a period in which both 153A and 160D are both applicable?
No, the way it works, and I checked with the School of Government, because different local governments are adopting the 160D edits locally at different times, they have until July to complete that. And so I said, "Well, what happens before you've adopted them locally? What do you reference, for example, in a presentation?" And they said, "Reference the old statutes until we've adopted the 160D changes." And they said, "You also go by the old statutes, not just reference them, but that's what you use, because they are a little different, until we adopt the 160D changes." Are you, you're ready over there?
Well, I'm at the place where it talks about the checklist. I'm looking for the checklist.
Okay.
Is that, is that right now?
Yes, that's it. And they even have a legend here that shows like the different items in the checklist, like things that we need to do, things that we need to think about, and things that we may change in our ordinance but don't have to.
Okay. Okay, that's what it looks like if you're looking.
And I talked with the UNC School of Government Planning Attorneys, who are like the leading experts on this, and they've been hosting office hours and modules and things of that nature to help people. I talked with them extensively about questions I had, but if you notice anything you think needs to be added or changed, definitely let us know, we have time to do that, and the ordinance can always be updated, just generally speaking. But they just want people to try to have the 160D changes adopted by July, if possible. So, again, these are changes to various ordinances, and those include zoning subdivision and watershed, as well as our rules of procedure, which are not technically ordinances, for the planning board and Board of Adjustment. And the watershed ordinance, I barely made any changes, and actually, I didn't make any 160D changes. I just made some grammatical changes to that one, actually, because I was looking through it to see if it needed any 160D changes. Didn't find any, and so that's why that one is sparse in terms of changes, the watershed ordinance. The rest did have 160D-related changes.
Do you have, do you want to do these all at once, or taking them individually?
Well, what we discussed at the pre-agenda meeting was whether I look at each one individually, or if we're just looking at them on the whole, provide the checklist in advance, and then y'all let me know if you have questions. And the latter was what was decided upon at the pre-agenda meeting. But if anybody does have questions or wants me to go through them one by one, I can. Or you can, you know, if you haven't looked at it yet, you can look at it closely, and then let me know of any questions, comments, additions. And we can always add more, because we have time to add.
I've looked over it, and I appreciate all the work that you've done.
Oh, thanks.
Very, a lot of work.
I did think I was going crazy sometimes, it was so tedious. Thank you, I appreciate that. It wasn't fun.
Looks like the majority, I mean, there's some that's been rewritten, but it looks like the major, looks like the majority of it is.
Word changes.
Yeah, word changes and statutory changes.
Mm-hmm, yeah, oh, yeah, exactly, and reference changes, exactly. Yep, there are a lot of those, so let's see if there's anything else I need to mention about that. Oh, okay, and so, there are some additional edits that are unrelated to 160D that are proposed in the zoning ordinance. And I've made grammatical changes in all of them, as I noticed, things that I thought needed to be updated. And the particular changes I'm talking about in the zoning ordinance are, we have added a proposed short-term rental definition and allowances within each residential district in the zoning ordinance per the county attorney's recommendation, along with updates to the general liability insurance provision for cell towers for clarification purposes. So just clarified further, because we noticed cell tower companies were getting a little confused about the insurance provision. So if anybody has questions, thoughts, or, you know, wants to change any of that, we can do that. And then another thing to note is a professional engineer working with Foothills Regional Airport has been talking with me, and they gave a presentation on updates that they could provide for our ordinance. However, they don't have those completed yet. They're analyzing them and our ordinance and everything, and they are hoping to get back to us. So hopefully, in the near future, we'll have even more edits to our zoning ordinance, especially with regard to the airport section of our ordinance, the aviation section. So they, I thought maybe they would be able to get those to us before, you know, tonight, but understandably, it's kind of a long process. So we've had some meetings, but they're still looking at that, and they will get back to us with that. And those aren't required by 160D, so we don't have to rush with that. It's just something, a best practice. And then, something to keep in mind is that zoning ordinance amendments do require a consistency statement similar to the zoning map amendments. However, theirs doesn't require us thinking about health, safety, and welfare, just consistency with the comp plan. So I do have a consistency statement, and it went away. I'm not sure where it went.
You don't happen to have a pre-prepared motion that you're looking for?
She's trying to find it by.
It was on the screen, but I'm sorry if I closed it. I don't, didn't think I did, but it went away. So it's in your packets as well. And yes, like you said, pre-proposed consistency statement that you may either adopt, I'm sorry, recommend for adoption to the Board of Commissioners, or you may create your own, or, and that can be, you know, saying you don't want to adopt the amendments, or that you do want to adopt the amendments. And the staff recommendation, again, per GS 153A-341, would be recommendation of approval of consistency statement, followed by recommendation of approval of text amendments. And this consistency statement just states, "Approval of this request is reasonable and in the public interest because the amendments are consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, which recommends best practices such as keeping ordinances up to date and legally valid with regard to the North Carolina general statutes." And the motion that would go with that is motion to recommend approval of the text amendments to the Board of Commissioners. And again, you can create your own, but I just tend to provide a draft, which a lot of planners do that, so.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions, Shelley? And if not, do we have a recommendation from the board?
I would, without rereading all of that, I would move that we do recommend approval of the consistency statement and the motion that's set forth on the screen that was prepared by Shelley.
Okay. Have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, yeah.
All right, motion passes. Thank you again, both of you, for your work.
Thank you, Kim, also, and thank y'all, planning board, for serving, because I know it's not easy.
All right, pre-agenda volunteers, May 25th, 10 o'clock, if needed. Okay, I can do it. All right. And if there's anything, if there's nothing else. So John and Jeff will be pre-agenda volunteers, Kim. And if there's nothing else, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All those in favor, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, go home. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.